Welcome to the 2022 Maui County Candidate Interviews. Today, we have Cara Flores, who's running for county council for the Kahuluiisi. Welcome, Cara.
Thank you.
Cara, as a first question, I'd like you to get to have the people get to know you a little bit better. What is your overall background in terms of your experience that makes you suitable for this office? As well as your civic engagement that you've had recently?
Awesome. Well, I'm first of all, most and foremost, I guess, a mom of three children. I have been a mom of more children. We did do foster care at one time. And we'll probably do it again in the future. But other than that, my professional career, I have my degree in engineering, which I got back a long time ago before I had kids. And for the last 15 years, I've been working in real estate. Also, this year, I was working as a substitute teacher because of the sub shortage. And one of my children told me they're in the cafeteria a lot. And a lot of classes weren't happening because they didn't have subs. So I went ahead and signed up to be a substitute teacher this year, which was a great experience. And then I've always done a lot of political activism.
So could you elaborate on that political activism and civic engagement here for Maui County?
Yeah, so I've testified a lot before the county council on various issues. I've also testified in the state government, the senate and house committee meeting hearings. I've written a lot of letters. I've started some petitions. I've always been politically active. I think the thing that I'm most proud of that I've done that was very effective was several years ago, my oldest son had a pretty long seizure at the time. This wasn't in Maui, but he had a pretty long seizure. We were pretty far away from the emergency room. And my first time ever public speaking in front of, I guess, a civic engagement was going to a council meeting and telling them about the problem that we didn't have emergency services. And it took 45 minutes for an ambulance to get out there. And through a lot of petitioning and working with neighbors, we actually got an EMS like fire station built that was already in the plans, but they sped it up and went ahead and built that. And they also parked ambulance near our neighborhood after that, which probably saved a lot of lives. But it was the first time I was did something that required a lot of bravery. I am not naturally a person who goes out public speaking. So yeah, and running for office is not something I ever expected to do. It's just at this moment, I feel a sense of responsibility to do something specifically about our housing crisis.
So you said you testified. What was the major issue that you've testified on?
I've testified on a lot of things during the pandemic. I think I got really frustrated with a lot of what was happening. Testified on pandemic related issues. I've testified a lot before the Board of Education about school issues and community issues as well. I've testified quite a bit on affordable housing type of issues. Actually, right before I jumped on this meeting, was testifying on an affordable housing issue at the Affordable Housing Committee.
Great. Thank you. Our next question will come from Asia Iyer.
Hi. So having been on a lot of council meetings, I'm sure you've seen the efficacy of the different committees and really what they're involved in. Which committee do you see yourself heading up and why?
So I'm not going to be beggars, be choosers as a new council member. But I would like to be on the infrastructure committee because I'm hoping Gabe Johnson stays on the Affordable Housing Committee. I think he's done an excellent job there. And I think the other part of affordable housing is infrastructure. I'm also really worried about climate change and sea level rise. And I think infrastructure is really important as far as those issues are concerned. So that would be my top choice. But again, I'm not going to be picky.
Are there other committees that you feel akin to what their purpose is besides the infrastructure?
I mean, I feel they're all important because the climate change CARES committee, of course, is also important. A lot of what I understand in my background is I think I would serve better on something like affordable housing or infrastructure. But yeah, those would be my top two. And CARES would probably be third. Yeah.
The other question I have is about water rights and freshwater. We've had a lot of a lot of different water issues come up over the last few years. Which of those have you been party to? And what is your feeling about how we need to move forward with freshwater here in the county of Maui?
Well, with climate change, I think waters probably are number one issue. Second, only right now to housing, but without water, housing really doesn't matter. We have, as global warming increases, we're going to have less and less access to freshwater overall. And because of that, and I believe that water is probably our number one most important resource, especially being isolated from anywhere else, that it should be a public trust and it should be protected as such. And so I would like to see the county act on that. And you know, I'm disappointed that there's any talk of us even giving a lease to AMI at this point, or you know, Maui Pono or anybody. I don't, I don't believe water should be leased, especially moving forward into such an uncertain future with climate change and everything that we're facing. So.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Our next questions will come from Bruce Douglas.
Hey Cara. Cara.
Cara.
Cara, look at it right. I'm going to ask you to move your microphone a little closer to you, even if it's in the. So for me, the sign of a real statesperson is not just what they vote for, but what they champion in the, in the council chambers, what the bills they bring forward, that they research and bring forward and see to the end. If you were elected, what would be your three top priority issues that you'd want to champion?
So I think we need to kind of switch our, the method of planning right now from having developers plan out our housing to having the county and the government kind of say, this is where we want housing and this is how much we want, and here's how we want to develop. And so I'd like to write legislation in that direction of having more of a social housing approach. I really like some of the ideas that have come from Stanley Chang, who's working on the state level for housing, but he proposed Aloha House Housing. And while it's not perfect, and I do have some issues with it, overall, I agree with the concept. And I would like to see a switch into that direction. As far as other legislation, I'd like to see, I would like to enable residents to be part of our housing solution. And I think we can do that by actually relaxing some of the requirements on owner builders specifically. So I would like to see specific legislation for owner builder regarding like accessory dwelling units and expansion of their own property. And so I think in that way, we could add housing without developing necessarily more huge housing developments. And it could be limited to once every 20 years, you get to apply for this special permit to do work on your own property as an owner builder. That's fast tracked and not as costly as normal development. Also, I would like to see long-term building inspections because of what happened in Florida with the collapse of the condominium. Right now, we do not require any kind of inspection through the county once a building's built. So with so many multi-story buildings so close to the shoreline and possibly eroding underneath, I would like to see some kind of requirement that there be a post-build inspection for safety specifically.
Thank you. And to follow on that, you had mentioned you had done a lot of testifying during the pandemic time. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I did a lot. I don't know exactly. You want elaboration on? I've, I presented a plan for us to have a community-based group instead of, that's open to the public. And of course, that was never passed. I've testified for several different good plans that didn't get listened to or followed. But I've testified for the Board of Education and to the state, actually, to reopen schools before reopening tourism during the pandemic. I did a lot of testimony. So there's hours of it that you can go find if you want to. But yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Great. And Kathleen, next?
Aloha, Cara. I want to ask you about our homelessness, our homelessness crisis. And you know, and you're representing, I mean, you're from, you're representing Kahului, and there are a lot of of large warehouses and businesses that remain vacant because of kind of the death of retail. And so I believe there's, they get tax relief for remaining vacant, whereas they could possibly repurpose these warehouses, factories, vacant buildings into homeless shelters or rentals. How do you feel about that?
So I would like to see us expand our homeless shelter capacity. We don't have nearly enough right now. I'm really upset that they're taking down the housing, even though it's temporary and not very good over on Wailei. Those units are going away, and that's really upsetting to me. But as far as redevelopment of what current infrastructure we already have, part of the part of the social housing idea, I guess, is that you create walkable, livable spaces and that you don't segregate people by income. And so I would say that you have all income types at one housing place that also has businesses. That's the kind of multi-use development that I would like to see in an ideal world. And where you would bring in people who have, you know, lower incomes would be able to rent and rent next to a person who has a really high income. And from the outside, the units might look identical, and in the inside, one might be a lot more upgraded. But that's, yeah, but yes, we need more homeless shelters. I don't think we just, if we build more and more homeless shelters and don't have a plan to then move those people into permanent housing where they can have dignity and live a long, beautiful life, I think what we will find is influx of lots more homeless people and no permanent solution. So I think shelters are a temporary solution, and I'd like to see more long-term permanent solutions.
You know, when you just said they were removing some units over near Wailei, are those the ones that were, looked like pods? They were white? Yeah, it's my understanding those were actually for COVID quarantine.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I, I know they were using some for COVID quarantine over at the airport. I'm not sure if those were being used for COVID quarantine. I think those are a long, well, not long-term, obviously, but those were a housing solution for the people they moved when they did the sweeps. At least that's what I thought they said on the mayor's press conference.
Right. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Alan Lloyd next.
Hi, Aloha Cara. And I have two questions. One is, well, first, a little background. As you probably know, rents are increasing substantially. A house in a room is 1350, a one-bedroom is 1800, a two-bedroom is 2000. And we can just keep going about that. So what are your thoughts about residential rent control?
So yeah, I think those rents are low. Those might have been six months ago. I don't know. I think rent has gotten out of control as have property values. Rent controls are really complicated. There's been places where they work and there's been places where they fail. And so I think handling that with like a scalpel type precision is really important. And replicating rent control systems that have worked would be the way to go. But I also think as a long-term solution, again, with the social housing type of development, that the government could develop rental properties that we rent out long-term. Maybe we rent them out for a five-year lease or a seven-year lease where the tenant can get out easily, but they're not going to have to move in a year and they know their, their set price. And I think that's the way to go. As far as development, that's the direction I'd like to see us start taking. Other places have started taking that and other places have been successful with that. Like if we want to look at another country, Vienna, but California is actually working on similar plans to try to create that kind of social housing. And in that case, if you have really high-quality rental properties, they're only for residential use for people who live and work here, then you don't really need rent control as much if you have adequate housing supply for the people who live here. So at long-term, that's what I'd like to see us do. But in the immediate, we need to do something.
Yeah, okay. I have a follow-up question on that. But let me ask my second question. My second question is what you're, okay. So commercial rents are also high. Many of the reasons why after the, after the mask mandates of COVID, there are empty spaces because the rents went up during COVID. So what are your thoughts about commercial rent control as a way to keep rents affordable so small businesses can have a storefront?
Yeah. So I'm not as familiar with commercial rent control laws. With real estate, it's really complicated because there are property rights awarded by the constitution. So obviously, we can't violate anyone's property rights. But I think a similar thing to a vacancy tax, which some places have successfully done with residential, might be the way to go. I would have to do a lot more research on what's actually worked to control commercial rental space. But I do get discouraged to see so much empty commercial space and that's not being used. And I also think re-envisioning how we develop areas so that we make them more walkable and bikeable, we might look at commercial space and say, hey, that'd be a really good multi-use space. And we could develop areas people could work and live and go to their doctor and never need a car. So I think that would be excellent.
And I have follow-up on that, but I won't go there. How would you fund social housing?
Through the Affordable Housing Fund and through other means, which would obviously increase revenue. But I think we need a higher tier. I love that Keonie Rolles Fernandez passed the tier system and our taxes and got that through. I'd like to see a tax on people who have $10 million and up. And I'd like to see a little bit more increased tax on tourism personally. And so, which I might have just lost a bunch of people there. But you know, I, I do think that we got to tax the things that do harm and that fair taxing involves taxing people with more money more because they are able to pay more. Residents aren't able to carry the burden of the taxes as much as someone who has a $10 million fifth vacation home. And we have the lowest property tax in the U.S., so I think we can afford to do that.
Thank you.
Cara, I'll do the next question. And it has to do with, again, this whole issue of affordable housing. And I'd like to just for you to reflect on your being a real estate agent, a real estate broker, where, you know, your livelihood depends on really the commissions that you get. And certainly, the higher the value of those homes, the more commission you receive. So my question is, where are you in terms of what's been happening with our average house now at $1.1 million? Where do you stand and how are you in terms of dealing with this crisis in terms of escalating costs?
So when I was an engineer, I never anticipated I would become a real estate agent in any of my future. And I actually got my real estate license just for my own personal use. And then had some complications when my oldest was born. I wasn't able to return to work because of some health issues going on with him. And so I helped a couple of friends buy their first house. And I bought my first house at 18. And it changed my whole life because what a lot of people don't know is I was living on my own through high school. I met with my principal, was able to graduate a year early. But I was very housing insecure. I've slept in my van. I used to have like a Scooby-Doo van. I've slept at friends' houses on couches. And I realized that I was never going to be able to go to college or have a good career or really have any quality of life if I didn't get housing that I could afford that was stable. And so at 18, luckily, back then, it was really easy to get a loan. I was able to buy a house with almost no down payment FHA loan. They had first-time homebuyer grants at the time that paid, paid most of the down payment requirement. And it changed my life. I ended up taking custody of my younger sister, I was able to get through college. And it just, it gave me equity and wealth. It started my path of being able to build wealth. And I think nowadays, young families don't have that opportunity anymore, and it's shameful. And it makes me really upset. My, my favorite people to work with are first-time homebuyers because that is the beginning of the rest of their life. It's the beginning of them having stable housing, be able to build equity, be able to build a garden or build, you know, build on and do a lot of sweat equity. It's just something that gives you permanency and quality of life and security. And I think it adds to everyone. I think everyone should have that opportunity, even if they don't choose to take it. During the housing downturn, I actually was able to help people keep their homes. I worked with the Obama program to help people negotiate with their mortgage companies and stay in their homes. And that was just purely out of my desire to help people because I knew so many people who were facing foreclosure and didn't know what to do. And so I signed up to work with that program and barely got paid anything. I got $25 per one that I did, but it was very rewarding because I got to see people stay in their homes. And what upsets me now is that I have a lot of friends who make good money, have good careers and have young kids and want permanent housing, and they don't have any opportunity to get that. And yeah.
So sticking, sticking with that question then of affordable housing. If we look at the zero to 140% AMI, average medium income, in order for them to afford a house, basically, they actually need some type of subsidies from the county or state in some way, shape or form. And I guess the question is, if there's an investment by the community to support them, their housing, for them to be in housing, should that remain affordable in perpetuity? Or should at a point down the road, they can then cash that in at market value and basically get a windfall? What's, what's your thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that are, I've talked to a lot of people about it. I know my own personal feelings are, it's not fair when 1,000 people apply for a lottery and only 100 people get it. And then five years later, 10 years later, they've done their time in their home and they get huge windfall money because they got a hugely discounted house. And I understand that problem. I think that program was created with good intention. And I do support the county putting money into developing infrastructure, even for developers. But I think we have to be really, really selective about how we do that, who we give money to, and what happens with those homes later down the road. And so for me personally, I would only like to see taxpayer money going to things that will stay at least in for owner-occupant use only, or for Maui resident use only going forward. I don't want to see empty second homes or investment properties from speculative investors. I would like to see our money go to off-site infrastructure into developments that have deed restrictions that say you have to be a resident of Maui and work here and live here full-time to do that. But as far as, yeah, the supplementing and having a 10-year wait period, that's where I lean towards what I call social housing, but also what's been done with Nahali O'Maui, which is the trusts. So I think that's the way to go. Hawaii Homelands already does a similar thing with leasehold properties. And I think the county could buy up large pieces of land to have developed with a specific vision that the residents want. And we can separate the land value from the house value and sell it to people for much cheaper by doing that. It would be, you know, you're not paying for the land, so maybe half the cost of the development, get a 99-year lease. And with a regular leasehold property, you can pass it down to your kids, your grandkids, whatever, for that whole 99 years. And I think that's a pretty good deal.
And could they sell that property to local residents then at market value, let's say, after a 10-year period?
So that's where I like the idea of it being a leasehold with the land value separated. Because if you have a 99-year lease and you have a deed restriction that says it's for owner-occupant use only, you're not going to sell it to a speculative investor because they would be committing mortgage fraud or whatever. They'd be violating their deed restriction. And then also, the value will never be as high as fee simple properties. And so even if you do build some equity, it's not going to be the same as if you had the fee simple because most of the value sits in the land. And as the lease years decrease, so you live in it for 20 years, now you have 79 years left, that also decreases the value. So it kind of balances itself out over time. And that's why I'd like to see that kind of model with development moving forward. Because it does force it to stay more affordable in perpetuity that way, too. And you're not just giving people $300,000 off the bat. So.
Thank you for that. Asia Iyer, next?
Hi. So I also have many children, like you do. And something that I like to talk to candidates about is what difference are you going to make in the quality of life for just everyday residents? What is the mark that you're going to make? We've talked a lot about affordable housing in this interview, but for, for the average, everyday Maui citizen, this is not as pressing of concern as just what is happening to them every day. So how are you going to make an impact on that?
Yeah. So I think investing into our public areas, such as parks and recreation areas, is something we should do a lot more of. And I was disappointed, we didn't do a lot of that in the pandemic. When we did have $100 million of pandemic money and we could have built shaded outdoor areas that were nicer for people to hang out safely, even when it's not a pandemic. So we didn't use that money for permanent change that could have helped. And I'm, I find that very unfortunate. I do think that housing affects a lot of people, a lot of residents that I've talked to, even if it doesn't affect them directly. I've been knocking on doors and I ask them, you know, what's the issue that you care the most about? And over half of them say housing. And some of them own their own house, but they're like, my kids can't get a house. So I have two of my kids living here and a grandkid, and they all want to get a house, but they can't afford to get a house. And so I do think housing is a huge issue. Even substitute teaching, I would ask the kids sometimes after we finished, what matters to you guys? What would you like to see the county do more of? And they were middle schoolers, so a lot of them talked about the park right behind the school that we were at. But you know, the kids care about the parks. They care about the fact that they're walking along cars when they're walking home. But a lot of them care about housing because a lot of them, even if they're not directly impacted, which some of them are very much so. Their, their cousin is, their, you know, people they know, their grandparents, whoever, like their best friend. Everyone knows some. people they know, their grandparents, whoever, like their best friend, everyone knows someone who's being impacted by housing right now. And so I think it is at a crisis level that it's becoming what a lot of people are most concerned with. But yeah, as far as after that, after we've solved that, I'd like to see more money spent in recreation areas where we can all congregate and use and where residents get the benefit from that. And then also climate change mitigation measures.
Okay, and kind of along those lines, who have you really looked up to in the government or in public spheres or in in service here on Maui and why? So who's kind of your inspiration, I guess, is a good.
Hard. A lot of them, you know, everybody has their strengths and weaknesses. I really like Tamara Paulton. I feel like she's really smart and she thinks really deeply about all sides of an issue and gathers data before she makes a decision. And I really like that about her. She's she's not quick to decide on one way or another. But once she decides, she knows why she is that way. But yeah, our council members, so many of them are so wonderful. I I really appreciate Kelly King and Gabe Johnson's working his butt off on affordable housing right now. You know, Keanu is awesome. I I like a lot of our council members. So obviously, I feel I can do the best job for the Kahului seat, but otherwise, yeah, I feel they're they're all working really hard and they've all done pretty amazing things. I mean, I could think of bills off the top of my head that all of them have done that have been changing, you know? Mike Molina created Affordable Housing Fund and thank goodness for that. And yeah.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Great. Bruce Douglas will be next.
Hi Kara. One of the things we learned from the pandemic is how dependent we are on tourist income. If elected, what would you do to increase diversified economy? So we're not dependent only on the real estate or the tourist sector?
I think we need to wean off of tourism kind of quickly because we're facing global warming. And I don't think that's something we're going to have as a luxury twenty years from now, but I might be wrong. So I do think it's really important. We start looking at how to diversify our economy and looking into a relatively uncertain future. I think we need to invest in growing our own food. Before anything else, I think we need to start focusing on can we create all of our own food here and how can we do it? And I'd like to see us seek out, you know, even maybe federal subsidies specifically for growing food so that the farmers aren't having to charge as much for produce, but can still sell and make a good profit because farming is really hard work. But I would like to see more training to teach people how to do agriculture. Also, I have an engineering degree and I love STEM, so I'd like to see more in that direction and developing technology and things like that. Because so many people do remote work, we could have training in that and people could work from Maui and work from home and be in technology type of jobs. Again, I think if people are suffering and don't have a high quality of life, they will not seek new types of employment. So I do think we need to make sure that we have high quality of life for residents. And I think, you know, step one is housing. That's why ninety percent of what I care about is solving the housing crisis because I do feel that you're not ever going to diversify the economy if everybody's grinding so hard and working that they're just trying to keep a roof over their head. So.
Great. Thank you for that answer.
Great. We'll have Anne Kathleen next.
Hi Kara. I wanted to ask you, as of recent in Maualia, there was two hundred and fifty seven acres sold to a developer, which they're considering doing ag lots there. It was an area that was actually reserved for preservation because it was had eroded and it had a high risk for fires. There have been fires there and there's also watersheds there. And then as of recent, and now these are Kahului, but it could happen in Kahului maybe. In Giggle Hill Haiku, there was two hundred and fourteen vast parcel of land, eight, two hundred and fourteen acres. That was prime ag land, beautiful ag land. And it just surprised a lot of the residents there that thought that that would always be there for the people and for preserved like as a park has not. But what can we do to prevent those turning into like ag lots, but not ag lots that are really reserved for actually producing farm goods, you know, for sale? What can we do about that?
So I think that comes down to proper zoning, maybe. And then also the county taking you know, needs to be better at getting because the county intended to get that property at Maualia. And I'm not sure how they failed to do that. I don't know the backstory. It seems weird. And I think the county needs to do a better job of obtaining properties that we do want to keep for residential use through whatever means that has to be. You know, I not a big fan of eminent domain, but at some point you need to say, you know, especially with Giggle Hill. It's been a part of the community for so long. I'm not sure if that's where you're talking about, but.
Yes, yes, it was next to the marine park there.
Yeah. So I mean, my husband and I, when we lived in Haiku, we went and helped over there and helped get that reopened. It was closed for the longest time. And you know, it was, we spent a lot of time there when we lived over there. And I do think that is a part of Maui history and it would be shameful for it to be closed off to the public. And so until that came to light, I didn't even realize it wasn't public land. And I think, you know, better planning and you know, maintaining of public land and making sure that Maui owns the public land that the public uses. Or that doesn't go, you know, but but I think zoning is where that would fall under. It's own things for conservation if they're for conservation because then you can't, you can't do ag, you can't do anything on them. You have to do what's zone for, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Alan Lloyd.
All right, Kara. So what do you think the legal minimum wage should be?
For the state or for federal?
For the state, for Maui, for Maui.
Oh, for Maui. I mean, I supported the minimum wage bill that just went through. I think that is a good step in the right direction. It's a little too slow for my taste. I did watch the Appleseed presentation they gave on it. And I thought that was very informative. And I thought it was interesting. One of the considerations they take into developing that calculation is how much the cost of living is and the price of housing. And so I think in Maui, it probably needs to be higher than the rest of the state because our cost of housing is higher. And if we could get our cost of housing reduced and provide more housing for residents that they could actually afford, then we wouldn't need such a high minimum wage. But yeah, for without, I I wouldn't guess because I'm not economist and without experts telling me what the minimum wage for Maui County should be. I'm not going to just throw a number out there, but I I think it's probably higher than eighteen dollars an hour. I would refer to, you know, some kind of expert in that field if I were trying to set it. But I don't think we can set our own minimum wage at the county level. I'm not sure. But I think that might be out of our jurisdiction. Yeah.
And then my second question would be, if you're elected to county council, how would you speed up the timeline of the current bill that passed?
I so I don't know as a council member that we could speed it up. I mean, I think it'd be a great idea for it to get sped up. I think what we could do is maybe control what we can control, which would be our county government pay. I'm not sure what that is, but we could speed up our own government pay and minimum wage at the county level. I'm not sure that we could make any private businesses do that. Yeah, I I agree. It's too slow on the state level. That was my big issue with that bill. It's not fast enough. And a lot of people are suffering and having to work more than one job. So.
So would you support any agency that contracts with the county that they have a a minimum wage starting, yeah, starting in twenty twenty three of sixteen dollars an hour?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be, I think that's a great idea. I would definitely support that. I think that's very reasonable and still probably too low, but I think that would be a good start. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Kara. I'm going to ask the next question. And it has to do with our septic system that we have throughout the county. We have three major injection wells and certainly causing difficulties offshore in our ecosystems as well as in Kihei, there's actually, you can smell septic when the tourists are here going full tilt. What would you do about that? And how would you help resolve that issue for our county?
Yeah, so the cesspools is a big issue and it's creating a lot of damage to our reefs. And thinking of tourism, I mean, we're not going to have any tourism if all of our beaches are gross and the reef is all dead. And so even from the people who may not agree with me side, I think there's a benefit to cleaning this up. And there's been so many technology advancements in wastewater. I don't think it should be a monumental task. But I think one thing we could do fairly easily that's not happening right now is any roads where there are cesspools down a long road of homes are close together. They're right next to county sewer line that just doesn't go down that road. We could just put a county sewer line down the road. And as we're upgrading our county sewer services, at least we're getting rid of those cesspools potentially and making it a lot less expensive for people to convert. Because I know plenty of people who have cesspools who'd like to convert their for personal use, but it's too costly. And so I think on a really small scale, that would be something we could do that would help a lot of residents increase their property values and create some change. For the long term, we're just going to have to spend a lot more money fixing it. And also I think we need to really consider the cost of tourism, not just in the short term, but in the long term and take those costs into consideration. Try to find a way to charge that back to the tourist. So if we need to spend half a billion dollars upgrading a waste system, the resident shouldn't be paying for that because we saw while all the visitors were gone, that there wasn't a strain on our sewage system. So that tells me that the resident shouldn't be paying to upgrade it. It should be the visitor. So we should find a way to pass those costs on because that's what we're actually paying for.
Great, thank you. We'll have Asia Iyer next.
So what have you enjoyed about campaigning so far?
Oh, easy question. I've been knocking on people's doors and meeting people who I don't normally run in the same circles with. And I love hearing people's stories. And I have heard, I have a list of things that this needs to be fixed and this needs to be fixed. And it's interesting and slightly overwhelming. But, you know, a lot of people line up on their doors and ask them, you know, what concerns you and what's going on? You know, they talk about the big issues, but so many people just take you right outside and they're like, look right here at this curb or look down the street over and, you know, why is that weed growing there in the public park? You know, it's, some of them are really small things, but it matters to them because they see it every day. And it just has shown me that our public servants can do a lot more to serve the residents here. And it's been fascinating to hear people's stories. I've heard people who've been here generations and you know, it's, that's my favorite part is getting to meet people one on one. Yeah.
So along those lines, what do you think you would enjoy the most about being a county council member if you were elected?
Yeah, so as I said, I never thought I would run for office. It wasn't ever in my purview of what I thought I'd be doing. But I like seeing positive change. I have a hope for the future and a lot of concern for the future. And I like seeing things done. And I think achieving things, getting things actually done is that helps people because that's really why I'm running. I want to help the people who live here. I, you know, expect it'll be more than a full time job and there'll be days where I'm working twelve hour days. And I expect I'll be working on the weekends and taking calls and meeting people at the park. And it's going to be a nonstop job if I get it. So the reason I'm wanting to do it is to help people and create change that's permanent for our community. So.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Great, Dart. Our last question will be Bruce Douglas.
So you had talked a bit about sustainable agriculture. And as we saw during a pandemic to have our own food here resource, what would you do as a council member to promote, support, encourage sustainable agriculture and our shift from plantation economy dominated by one company owning most of our central valley to what we want to see, including the water issues?
I would like to see a lot more small organic type farms. And I'm never going to poo poo on large farms that are providing food for people because we're so desperate at this moment. But I would like to see us create smaller organic type farms because I do see the benefit of soil sequestration with carbon and no till farming. I know it's a lot more work, but I don't really think it is in the long run. And so if we're looking at the big picture, I'd like to see us move in that direction. And I think our Department of Agriculture could help with that. I also think the county providing land for people to farm on that because that's the biggest cost is the cost of the land. If we could provide trained farmers with land to farm on with the purpose of growing food. And then if we could give subsidies towards that, so work towards gain subsidies to make farming a really profitable good living for people to have a high quality of life and provide food for the people in Maui County. And we'd have a nice diverse amount of food. I also love what Maui Food Hub's done and just the logistics of getting produce from the farms to the people. I think those kind of programs, we can support them and grow some good and you know, farming at schools. I know that some of my kids' schools have farms and some don't, but they're working on that. And I think we should support those kinds of things as well. But yeah, I'd like to see us eventually have all of our schools have a salad bar. It's all Maui grown vegetables and fruits and whatever for the kids to just get as much as they want. Because we should, we have like the great environment to do it and we have great nutrients in our soil. And if we can just take care of those and grow those microbes, we could have some pretty amazing micronutrients in our kids' foods. So help them grow, help their brains.
And part dovetailing on that, would you support the use of eminent domain to obtain the East Maui irrigation and make that a public trust resource?
Most definitely. Yeah, I think that's what we should do because I'm not sure what all happened in the last couple of years that the county doesn't own it, but we should own it. We should own it. It's over a hundred years old, I believe. It's, I'm not sure the exact age, but it's very old. It's very leaky. We have a lot of broken dams and a lot of places where we're just not being efficient. We need to start conserving water very, very seriously. We need to deal with our water issue before things get much worse. So.
Okay, thank you. That give it to Paul.
Well, Kara, thank you for asking, for for answering all these questions. And just in terms of things that we might have missed, is there anything else that you'd like to conclude with? Any points you'd like to make that we haven't covered at this point in time?
If you want to check out my website, it's karafloras.com. Um, if you want to check out my website, it's karafloras.com. I'm always available to answer questions. Uh, my email's karafloras@gmail.com. Um, yeah, I, I love hearing what other people are concerned about and learning the issues that face other people's um everyday lives. But yeah, I'm, I'm looking to be one of the council members. I, I do realize I can't change everything as one person. And so I have visions and dreams, but I have to get at least four other council members on board with that. And if we get vetoed, five other council members. And so I do intend to work as a good team member to try and get um some good ideas pushed through and pushed forward, so.
Great, well, thank you Kara for this interview. And I'd like to remind our viewers that uh you vote for all of the county council members, uh all nine of them so that it goes countywide. So all of you can vote for Kara if you so choose. And again, uh if, for those of you who are listening on Facebook Live, you can also get our interviews at maupononetwork.org and also on Akaku TV, channel fifty four. Aloha.